I'll call this regular meeting of the Virgin City Council to order on November 13th at 5:30 PM. Would everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm beginning to lose my voice. I don't know why. Okay. I think we have one amendment to the agenda, and that's in item six. The city manager's report will add a six E., and that is Mahawi versus City of Virgin's And we go right on to visitors. So in the visitors, we have two visitors who will be speaking tonight, talking about wanting to be on the library board of trustees. And I will be taking them in alphabetical order. One is not here tonight, so it'll be two, a little bit shorter. And I'll tell you the route in which we got here. Back a ways, we -- the library came in with a recommendation for a person to be appointed. Another person in the audience told us that really we weren't following, or the library trustees weren't following, the bylaws. And lo and behold, after we looked at that, we found out that the bylaws weren't correct because the deed to the library specifies how a library trustee, that is basically the representative from the city council, is to be chosen. And so we, all along, for many years, have appointed the trustee that's representing the city council, but it's really not for us to appoint. And so according to the deed, we designate a person, and then the library trustees actually does the appointment. And if we do nothing, then they have the free will to appoint whoever they want. So tonight is to determine the designee. How we'll do it is each of you, there are two of you, if you would just tell us a little bit about yourself. I know we've gotten letters, and the council has those letters, and why you would like to be a trustee. And we will not be deciding it immediately. We will be going into executive session at the end of the meeting, and then coming back into public session. You are welcome to stay through the whole time until we come back into public session because it has to be a public vote, but it won't be until the end of the meeting. So with that, we start with Tanya. Is it Bolduc or Bolduke?
Bolduc.
Bolduc. Okay, Tanya.
Well, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to express my interest in serving on the Board of Trustees of the Bixby. As I said in my letter, I really love libraries. I love our library. It's a real asset to our community. My community involvement up to this point has been largely centered around activities in schools that my kids are in and attend, but I'll be becoming an empty nester shortly. And so now I get to choose a community involvement area of my own interest. And I've had the Bixby on my radar for a long time. I heard about this opening. I saw it on Front Porch Forum, and I said, well, maybe now's the time to throw my hat in the ring. So in addition to a great asset to the community, I'm really kind of just fascinated about the rule of libraries today, the digital age, and sort of the stack attack that libraries are coming under. You know, I poked around, I had two articles today, and it's a really interesting area, and there's a lot of potential for libraries, and it's kind of an interesting time for them, sort of exciting. So that's about it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And Erin Roach?
Hello, thank you for having me. So you said we should tell us a little about ourselves, so I, especially being relatively new to the community, I feel like I need to share a little bit about how I got here. As you saw, my son ran in here. Most of you know me as a mom of a 10-year-old, precocious 10-year-old. But I wasn't always that. So about eight years ago, almost eight years ago, we moved here after having moved five times in three years, when my son turned three the day we moved here. So anyway, we stumbled around Vermont a little bit. But before that, I grew up on Long Island, outside of New York City, and had a usual suburban childhood, and traveled a lot with my family, and then went away to college in Chicago, lived on the south side of Chicago for four years, and then on the north side of Chicago, and then moved to Seattle. In Seattle, I had a variety of different jobs, and I just feel like you should kind of know that I am not just a mom of a 10-year-old. So right now, I work for a nonprofit philanthropic foundation up in Burlington where we are doing everything we can do to make sure that every family has access to affordable, quality childcare, and I take care of all their program databases and collect all their data and analyze it. And I am kind of a nerd in that sort of numbers way. I got a degree in applied economics. That's how we came to Vermont. And those things are not always apparent when you see me just chasing my kid around. So I feel like that's important. And also, let's see, I've been an educator and have also worked in sales and marketing for technology firms in Seattle and done all kinds of other things. So I just always feel like I have to bring all of that to the table because it is actually a really long list of things that I've done before that I feel like, when I think about why I was interested in being on the Board of Trustees at the Bixby, I feel like I bring an awful lot of diversity. And I'll say that probably the first thing I did on a weekday in Virgin's when I moved here was to get a library card. It's that kind of grounding for me about my community is to be part of a library, to be part of something, and that's really important to me. And at the same time, I have kind of all of this professional background that I feel like, thinking about the library, looking at the trustee's sort of strategic plan and what they're hoping to accomplish in the next eight years or something, I feel like there's a lot of different pieces of my professional life that I can bring to something like that.
Thank you. And I'd like to thank all of you, including the one who's not here. Obviously, we have one position, and there are three people, so two people are going to be saddened by whatever decision that we make, but we hope that you will continue to have an interest in either the library when another board opening comes up, or some other board or commission that we have, because we really do need people who are interested in serving the community. So I thank you ahead of time, but sorry, a couple of people aren't going to be very happy at the end of the night. So we move on to approval of minutes and the warrant. The warrant is circulating someplace, oh, really, right in front of me. The minutes, and so I need a motion to accept the minutes of October 23rd.
On being said, motion.
The motion has been made and --
Second.
Seconded. Okay. Are there any amendments to the minutes?
I had just one question. On the first page, under the presentation, fourth line down, substation normally processes 840,000 gallons a day. Is that number accurate?
I'm sorry, Jeff, one more time.
840,000 gallons a day?
I think it's closer to 340 on a daily average basis.
Okay, thank you.
I did ask Rick Shuput, our wastewater treatment plant supervisor, for clarification. I did not receive that.
Okay, thank you. That was my only comment.
Thank you, Joan. Because I've got one or two things. Okay, in that same paragraph, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six lines up from the bottom. It talks about the remaining lines are transited. It's really transite, and I don't know how to spell it.
I googled there, and it said asbestos cement.
Yeah? Oh, yeah, no, that's fine. It's just that I don't know whether, it looks like it says transited --
Transited.
-- as opposed to transite, and I don't know how transite is spelled. But that's just one to check. And then down at the last line, it talks about all of the water runoff goes into Catch Basins or Mossy Brook. I thought that --
On East Street.
On East Street, yes. I thought that he said that it goes to a Catch Basin at the end of the street and then into Mossy Brook.
He could've.
Because I think that's what actually happens. It goes to that end manhole, and it goes right into the brook.
Into the Catch Basin and into Mossy Brook.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, the other one is on the city manager's report, page two, last line. It says, "On the Bixby Library Lot As It Proposes A Hazard." I assume the word should be presents a hazard or something to that effect.
Or poses either one.
Or what?
Or poses.
Or poses, yeah. Either one of those. And that's it for me. Anybody have any others? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we go on to citizen comments. Any citizens out there wanting to make a comment? Seeing none, we move on to business. Item 5A, request to use fire station meeting room for Prospect Cemetery Association meetings. Mike?
Well, I'd like to start off with a little trivial question, and I'll just tell you the answer right up front, save the question. Best work for me. Did anybody in the room know that on August 4th, 1892, the city deeded Prospect Cemetery to trustees?
No.
Well, not sure if the city owned it or what, but it ended up being deeded to the Prospect Cemetery trustees. Of course, the players throughout have changed over the years, as well as the rules and regulations that we have to meet and abide by. One of the things that we have to do now, because we're nonprofit, is we have to hold a kind of an annual meeting, and doing so, we have to have a location in which is handicap accessible. In the past, not knowing what the rules and regulations were, we used to, Sheila and Mike Collette and myself, being firefighters, we, part of the trustees, we'd have the meetings down here. Well, I told Sheila this year, I said, "You better check with City Hall to see if it's scheduled or not." So she went to find out, and unfortunately, we couldn't use this. Graciously enough, we were able to use the police station, and thank you for that. But what we'd like to do now is, we'd like to see if we could get added to the list on your policy as a group that could use the fire station because of the ramp, the handicap, accessibility, and that sort of thing. Short, sweet, to the point. We have one, maybe two, meetings a year, and because of right to know, we have to advertise it and open it to the public. So, Sheila, am I leaving it to now? Any questions of me or Sheila?
Do you have dates that you usually meet? Is it like?
It's random. When we feel that there's a need, we have it. Some of our, one of our members is Florida I for part of the year, and when he comes back, we usually do it sometime in the summer when it's more convenient for all, better warm weather than cold weather, so people can get out. We encourage them to attend. But again, we would do like policy requests or requires schedule it through City Hall if we regretted that permission.
Okay, does the council have any questions or comments about this?
Question, not on this specific, but is the idea, once we have the conference room in City Hall set up, that a lot of these meetings are going to shift from being here to being there?
That would be the objective, Mark, absolutely. I'll just interject with all due respect. Like, I don't see the Prospect Cemetery Association meeting the policy guidelines at first blush, and that's just my reading of it. I think the policy was put in place in 2003. Joan, you could correct me if I'm wrong. But it seems like they were very specific as to who was going to use the room, and that's just my reading, and it's up to the council to make their own.
Well, it's 2018. Maybe it's time for a change.
Yep.
You know, I mean, taxpayers help pay for this building. It's all paid for and bought for. City Hall, parking is always a problem on Main Street, and now that you get some flashing lights, that's great, but still, it might be a hardship for some people getting in the back, going up that driveway, especially if somebody was in a wheelchair, where this ramp is designed to deal with a wheelchair if need be. We just had to have one of our, we just had one of our members resign because of her age and ability to get around. And how many years was she on? We won't mention her name.
Twenty-three.
She was on 23 years, so.
How many folks are?
There are six right now. We're working on getting a seventh. Tom Jackman is the president.
And I assume that cemetery has no religious affiliation, right?
Oh, but I was going to crack the joke. People are dying to get in there.
That's true, but I've always wondered why they put fences around cemeteries. Nobody's getting out of it.
No? True.
Okay, well, if you're going to add that to the policy, and actually, I don't have a big concern about it, other than we will be opening ourselves up to possibly, obviously, some other associations that are non-government affiliated. If you look at the policy, the policy really has, is pretty restrictive to basically the police department, the fire department, and government-associated organizations. This room was never intended, at least as far as I know, to be a general community room. Now, for this small organization, I don't think it'll be a problem. The only thing is, is we may get some other requests for its use. Now, I don't know whether we have the little hook that this, it used to be the city's cemetery or not.
We can turn around and give it back.
No, thank you. Because technically, I think by the law of the state, that if a cemetery gets abandoned, there's no association to take care of it. It does come back to the town, so.
Why not? It's getting hard to find --
People.
-- people to serve on committees like that. And so, yeah, it's difficult, and try to keep the cost of everything down.
I was just wondering if the association had considered using the Bixby's lower level, which is also ADA accessible for its meetings?
No, we hadn't given that consideration, no.
Yeah, and that's very accessible, actually.
Yeah.
Good, Mark.
Well, if you want to add to the policy, someone has to make a motion in order to do that.
I'll make the motion.
The motion has been made and --
So we're moving to add a new section to the policy, or just add this particular group to the policy?
It would have to be, I think, a new section, because all of the sections deal with specific things. There's one section for fire department, one section for police department, and another section which just covers various governmental units that may use it.
Right now, there's three of us that are in the fire department. One is like, a fourth one is a life member. We just got to either go out and find or make some other people some honorary membership to the fire department. We can take care of things, believe me.
So I haven't gotten a second yet on that.
Let me just ask this question. Is there any reason that anyone can't just say, "Is the firehouse available and can we use it?" Is there a reason that can't happen?
Well.
Well, I know, but I mean, if somebody came and said, "Listen, we're having this meeting twice a year. This is the two dates this year." Is there any reason that we would deny that?
Yes, because of the policy. And the policy was put in place to deliberately restrict it because the thought was, and I wasn't around for, well, I might have been around for the original policy, that this was not a general community room, that it was really the fire department's room, and there were, there should be limited use by other parties. At least that was the thought at the time, you know? And I mean, it certainly can change. You don't even have to have this policy for that matter. It could be wide open to anyone if you wanted it that way. I don't know what the fire department feeling would be.
That's what I was going to say. Has anybody asked the fire department?
The policy, the Boy Scouts used to meet down here, Cub Scouts, the littler ones, and the Girls and Boys Club met here for a while when the armory got shut down, and it was a concern for the firemen. They were doing a lot of damage down here.
The concern is the upkeep of the building. People cleaning up after themselves. So if somebody comes in with a muddy pair of boots or snowy boots and it's all over the floor, who's responsible? Usually, the firemen, fire people deal with anything except for, once a year, I think the city comes in and does the floor prior to election.
So that's why it got created, is once they all left, they created the policy, and it was not to be available to the public. The firemen, this is their home, and they prefer.
I would suggest that no decision be made until someone contacts the fire department and says, you know, see how they feel about it. This is their building, and yes, we pay taxes to it, but it is beloved by the firemen, as I know well. So I'd like to at least get their feedback before any decisions made by us.
I would also look to table it, just so we can have some, whatever language we wanted to add. You know, I'm assuming we'd want just a catch-all phrase at the end saying, "All other organizations could come before the council requesting permission," and we can grant it on an ad hoc basis, but I don't know that we can come up with the right language right here. I don't have an objection to it.
I don't have a motion on the floor because I don't have a second, so it can just come up again.
Yep.
Once the fire department has been consulted.
Is it possible, what a clause is here that says the fire department can grant groups' permission? That way, they can control some of the other groups that possibly could.
I don't know whether they would want that responsibility, but you could make the policy say anything and do anything you want.
Just a suggestion. The way it's set up, now Joan is the gatekeeper and keeps track of the scheduling. So what I will certainly do, Lynn, I think it's a great idea, is I'll reach out to Chief Brewer and ask him their opinion, and in the, at the same time, I'll work some interim language for our next meeting and bring to the council for approval.
But there is the library is a possibility.
Yep, we hadn't used that or thought of that, but yeah, that's a possibility. Okay. And we'll boycott Chief Brewer as well from the other end of the side. We'll make sure his fires go well. Just he may get whacked. I think, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, we move on to item 5B, appointment of trustee of Bixby Library. That will be moved to the end of the agenda after the executive session, and we are back in public session. Okay, item 5C, update from the Truck Traffic Safety Committee. Jeff?
Yes, we had our first meeting last week. It was quite successful. We had a lot of conversation. We are approaching this from the perspective that in five to 10 years, we will have a truck route. So our real objective now is to take a very close look at what we might be able to do to mitigate the truck traffic between now and the time we do have a truck route. We're going to have another meeting on the 5th of December. We're interviewing about half a dozen stakeholders, business owners on Main Street, and a number of other people to get their input on some mitigation ideas that we have. We have some homework. David's got a pile there to read, and it's a very enthusiastic group. And our real goal is to keep the momentum going and to keep it in front of everyone. And that's where we are.
Great. We do have another group, and I can't recall the membership of that. It's a kind of an ad hoc group that they put together themselves, who is working on the economic aspects of an alternate truck route, that if, in fact, that was built, would it have a positive economic effect because of the land that it opens up for use that is not used now? And it's an economic study to the degree that you can economically study something that is a vision and not a reality, but there's a group working on that also. All right, 5D, appointment of downtown basin master plan task force. Does it count?
Sorry, go ahead. So just two things there. I met with Tim Cook from the REC committee. He said, "You've got a meeting coming the third," I think, Lynn. So we are waiting for one representative from the REC committee for the downtown basin master plan task force. It's a mouthful, Rennie. And then we still need two citizens, two residents from the City of Virgin's to fill out that group.
Counsel, have any appointments? Later in the agenda, I'm going to make some comments why I think it's really important to get this group populated and working because of other things that are coming up that they could affect. So please, as they say in fifth grade, it's like, "Put your thinking caps on about who."
Be more public.
What's that?
Be more public and ask for volunteers, put it out on Front Porch Forum or something like that, saying there's two.
That's a good idea, yeah.
Two openings. Because I'm not sure that many people know this even exists, let alone that we're looking for bodies.
Yeah, yeah, that's a good idea. Let it out there and see who might be interested. And then we'll have another difficult time trying to decide who's going to go. Of course, we could expand the committee. It's a council committee. I mean, it's of, I don't know, five or six members now. I mean, you could make it into seven or eight if you wanted to, if there were more people that were interested.
Let's get five first. I'm not in favor of particularly large committees.
Neither am I, that's why.
They tend to get mired down.
I think it's more that if we need two and three applied, we could probably find one. If 15 applied, we'll figure it out.
Okay, we go to item six, city manager report, 6A. Hey.
Thank you all very much. Quick budget report, if anyone's had an opportunity to review it. One line that's jumping off the page is under Public Works, highway improvements. Our Booth Woods paving project, which came out great, went over budget. It's a long stretch of road, and the contractor just misrepresented what they thought it was going to take to get that filled. Our DPW supervisor, Jim Laro, is cognizant of the fact that we are over and is going to work to try to bring that in line in some of those other line items as well. Two items below that, state stormwater fee. Usually, that's a recurring $640 expense. We did have a bill that came in, should have been paid in June of 2018, and that's why we're over there by $500. That will stay that way. Heating fuel, I'm sorry, going back to the police department. I'm trying to get confirmation as to whether or not we converted to natural gas or not, so that's why you're seeing a $3,000 expense in heating fuel with no allocation against it at this point. So I owe Rennie and you folks an answer about that as well for the next meeting. And I think everything else is pretty much in line. If the council has any questions, we'd be happy to try to field them. Okay, thank you. City Hall conference room update? Yes, we will be updating the conference room. So the thought behind this initiative was that Mel had charged our DPW team with working on that on rainy days over the course of the summer. And you can see how many rainy days we had over the course of the summer based on the lack of progress in the conference room. I have spoken with Jim Laro and Matt Crowley, who's done the majority of the work in there, and we do feel that we've got a window between now and the end of the year, once our fall cleanup is done, to reengage that project and get it back, get it back up and running. We, you know, there's no allocated budget to do the work, which is why we're really trying to hold it internally versus having to bring contractors in to get that executed. But we'll be working for, working that forward. But we'll be working that forward. V-Trans, Virgin's 2020 paving project, this is exciting from my perspective because it's really going to be quite comprehensive. So V-Trans is going to pave 22A from city line to city line and Green Street down to the Bermuda Triangle. And when Jim Laro and I met with DuBois and King, who are the engineers, and V-Trans, the scope of work is significant, above and beyond just redoing our blacktop. And they have given us the ability to make specific requests of them in addition to doing the paving project. They're going to restripe all of our parking spaces. They're going to give us an opportunity to build in some of the traffic mitigation, speed mitigation topics that we've been discussing for a couple of years now, such as bulbouts, as you see down in front of the fire department, and we executed one on one side of Main Street in front of City Hall this summer as well. That portion of things are on us, the actual execution of those initiatives, but they're willing to do the engineering studies for us. So we'll be working closely with Jim Laro to see how much of that we can do within our budget. Other things that they are looking, will look at for us, and I think Shannon's going to speak about this in a minute, the Planning Commission is going to give us a list of recommendations as to what they would like to see executed at the same time. One thing that's been discussed extensively in the downtown corridor is a bike lane, and they will, they'll do the engineering studies to make sure, see if that's viable. And if we so chose, they would execute that at the same time. The other thing that I was particularly excited about, particularly in my new role, is that we can do portions of this at night. You know, I asked them if they would please do it in January, when we're not in the middle of our tourist season, and they were unwilling to accommodate me on that request. But they did say that it could be segmented, and, you know, City Hall to South Water Street or City Hall to South Maple Street could be done in the overnight hours to not negatively impact our downtown businesses, as I said, you know, in the heat of our tourist season. Shannon, did you have anything else there?
Sure. As Matt mentioned, the Planning Commission is going to pull together some recommendations. We're going to basically look at the Downtown Basin Master Plan and pull out some of the key points from there. Regional Planning is also very interested and supportive of making this happen and tying it in really with the truck route study as well. And Stantec, who is engineering that study, has already come with some ideas, taking things out of the basin master plan. So it is a really good opportunity. Matt mentioned that the state, you know, that certain parts of it, some of the curb cuts and things like that, our curb bulbouts, would be on us. There's some negotiation room there, and the state may be willing to do more than we think. This occurred recently in Morrisville, and they picked up the tab on a lot of extras. So, you know, there's more to come, but it's a good time for some of these other committees, the Basin Committee, the Recreation Committee, to all, bring all of these things together. And so as long as we're keeping communication going on between all of these different stakeholders, it's a good thing. And like I said, the Planning Commission is meeting December 5th, and we will have recommendations afterward for the city council on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon.
Are they going to pave down to where the bridge starts, then kind of close their eyes, jump across, and then continue paving? Or is something going to happen to the bridge?
I wish I had a little time machine that I could just get that part of things done first. My suspicion is that, it wasn't even my suspicion, we will be responsible for patching the bridge, and then they're going to go over the top of it. And then we're, at some point, that's all going to get torn up when they do the bridge repair work. So it is backwards.
I just wasn't sure if the bridge was somehow tied into this, or they're just going to pretend that that doesn't exist.
I wish. That would be great. I wish that was going to be the case.
Now, I don't know whether I should mention this because we might lose something, but the section from the bridge up to Pantan Road was done by the city by permission of V-Trans. It took some legislative maneuvering in order to have V-Trans allow us to do it on our own, which we saved, it cost about half the cost if V-Trans did it. But they required us at the time to basically escrow money for that section so that when it came time for it to be repaved, we would have enough money to repave it and keep it in good condition. That fund, I think, is someplace around 30...
Sixty-something.
Oh, it's sixty-something now, huh? Wow.
That's what Mel said, stop feeding it.
Yeah, it's a big chunk of money that's just sitting there. Now, if they're going to pave all the way through, including that section, we may be able to get them to release that money, and we can use it elsewhere for paving.
Well, our contract with them, I think it was like for 15 years.
Fifteen?
Yeah.
Oh.
We're only responsible for any maintenance for 15 years. And after that time period, it's up to them, and that money we had set aside is our money. It wasn't needed. But we only set it aside because it was part of the contract that said we had to.
But if they pave it, they may be able, we may be able to get that released earlier than the 15 years, because it hasn't been 15 years.
It hasn't.
Hasn't.
I would say it has. Randy Friday, that was when Randy Friday was here, and you were here 5, and Mel was here 10. So upwards of money.
Then maybe we should look at the contract again to see whether, see whether we can grab that money already, because we could use it this year.
Yeah, we certainly could. Yeah, we absolutely could.
Okay.
I know, when I heard you saying that, I thought, "Really?"
Addison County Solid Waste District, Virgin's recycling program update. So I have requests or proposals out to two different trash haulers, and those proposals are due back to me midweek next week, and then I will be reconvening a meeting of the five affected communities on the 28th of November. And the two, I'm sorry, the two haulers will be invited to attend as well to go over their Again, we're just trying to pave a path forward here, and we're getting different levels of service offering from the two different haulers, so it's probably just best that they come and present themselves to the five communities, and we'll make our decision after that. That still gives me 30 whole days to figure out what we're going to do.
You can do it.
I'm going to do it, Joe. There's no, not can. But I just want to keep, you know, this continues to be a topic of conversation between myself and the select boards of the other four communities, and Andy Kirkaldi from the Addison Independent is acutely aware of that this is kind of moving down the road as well. So if there are any questions from anybody, I'd be happy to entertain them. Otherwise, we're just moving on.
And I'd like to reemphasize, for purposes of people who watch this program, that the problem is not a Virgin's problem. It is the solid waste management district's responsibility to deal with all waste management within Addison County, including this. Now, we're keeping ourselves involved because obviously we have a big stake in it, but we really, really, we are not the responsible party. They should be doing some of this legwork that we're doing. We're trying to protect our own citizens relative to the service provided, and we're in there. But it really is their responsibility to turn this around and do the interim steps necessary as well as the permanent solution. I just want to emphasize that because if we have to shut down for a while or shut down completely, everybody's going to blame it on Virgin's. And it is not Virgin's problem, because people will think nothing else. It's located in Virgin's, it was started by Virgin's, I think, before there wasn't a waste management district even in existence. And I just want really people to know that, that it's not ours.
Thank you for that, Rennie. I appreciate it. But my objective is that we will have a facility operating on January 2nd, 2019.
And this would be a facility that is shared by the whole district or just Virgin's?
We're going to get out of subsidizing and being involved in the budgeting process, David. So we're going to have the independent haulers take care of, at point of drop-off, their own monetary exchange between them and the residents of the five communities.
Yeah, it's more just that there is a location.
That is correct.
Yep. And then ultimately, the one that I think that the Waste Management District will create, I think they will create a regional facility, hopefully in Ferrisburg, where they're talking about it, and really manage that, and we'll be completely out of it, just our residents will go, just like all the other towns that could go in Addison.
Correct. Thank you. Mahawi versus City of Virgin's Appeal. I received an email from our city attorney, Jim Womet, late Friday, that the owner of Mahawi, David Shalansky, intends to voluntarily dismiss the appeal from the docket. So this will be wrapped up in the next couple of weeks. I want to publicly recognize Peter Garen, who's our zoning administrator, who worked very closely with David Shalansky to better understand David's concerns regarding our zoning application, and to have finally kind of brokered a, I guess we'll call it a truce. And, you know, Peter really undertook that initiative and came out with, I think, the best possible results. So great job to Peter.
And a few bucks saved.
Yeah.
But I think not only is it something that, obviously, when it's dismissed from the Supreme Court, there's some money to be saved, but what really, I think, positive came out of it is that Dave Shalansky really did have some good ideas about making the process more visible or more clarity in the process, like some other towns do. And so I think the good result of it is that we'll have documents that people who are developing projects and so on can follow and know that if they do it this way, that's the way it's supposed to be done. And there won't be a lot of, I wouldn't say, I shouldn't say a lot of ambiguity, but there is some ambiguity and misunderstanding about what we're looking for when somebody's trying to develop. And what Dave was trying to do is get that clarified, and part of the reason for that, I think, for the suit, was to push the issue. And so I think we've been able to turn around probably with a very good result.
Agreed. Thank you, Rennie.
Okay, Mayor's Report. I have a short report. One, the city manager and I have met to talk about performance evaluation, his performance evaluation, and this is our suggestion. The council can do it a different way if you'd like, but since he's new, and by contract, he's on probation until March 1st, and we thought that we'd skip the goal setting, per se, because the goal is getting through six months and making sure everything gets done. And really rely on the form that I think Mark and, who else was the other one? Jeff. Mark and Jeff put together, I don't know, now it's a couple of years ago, right? But that seems to be a good way to measure performance, even though we don't have some other goals attached to that, and that we would do it and the timing would be right because if we do that performance evaluation in March sometime, then it would be inadequate time to deal with any budgetary things related to raises or whatever. So if the council wants to do it that way, then we'll just proceed. Or if you want to have a meeting of the council privately with the city manager to discuss other things, or you have some areas that you think should be goals, we can do that too. It's really, it's not, it's not a mayor-manager thing. It's, I'm just trying to facilitate it. It's really a council-manager thing.
I would think we'd do the evaluation before the election, because you'd have three new, could possibly have three new select persons.
Oh, that's a good idea.
So I would think you'd want to do it, well, whatever.
You're the only one survivor. You all have to be out there in the cold.
Yes, that's a good idea, particularly considering five. I mean, that could be a dramatic change.
Yeah. I think we need to do it in February.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
And the city clerk.
Yeah. And actually, I think probably if we do it about the same way this time around and search for the goal thing, maybe the next time around, but, and we have that form already so that we could do both.
So we're thinking at those evaluations, we will have, you would actually bring your goals for the next 12 months, and sort of get through treading water for this first part, come to February and say, "Okay, by this time next February, this is where I'd like to be, and these are the things I want to do." Is that the idea?
Perfectly appropriate, Mark. And, you know, I'd also like, you know, and appreciate some feedback from the council at that point as well. I mean, I'll have my evaluation for the first six months, but, you know, where do you want to see my focus over the next 12?
Just last night, we got the superintendent's goals, and she's kind of in the same boat you are. She just started July 1st, and so she's just putting together her goals for the coming year, and got those approved by the board last night, so same kind of thing.
Well, that's a good idea. Also, I think with Joan, the same thing, is if we're doing an evaluation, and then if you think about what goals and things you want to accomplish in the next year, that would be really good timing. Now, we'll get it into the right sequence of timing. Okay? Good. All right. Then I just want to come back to the paving thing, not so much about the money that we might be able to get, but I just want to emphasize how important it is for us to populate the Downtown Basin Master Plan Task Force, because really, and I've had several conversations with V-Trans, and they are willing to do quite a bit more. And, but we have to tell them what it is that we would like to see done. And so I think it's important for that task force to get moving and probably working with the Planning Commission to identify those things in the master plan. And there are quite a few things that relate to downtown, traffic movement, pedestrian safety, all of that stuff is already in the plan. And so it's a matter of having groups, appropriate groups, looking at it and saying, "Okay, we need to do, particularly in the interim basis, before anything else is done, we need to do this, this, and this," and go for it. And the more we have behind it, the Planning Commission, the task force, the more we have behind it, the more chance that we have in getting what we want, particularly with all the issue relative to truck traffic.
I've also seen, I've been on some emails with some folks from V-Trans. On those emails, there are people who were involved in the basin master plan, you know, Jackie Casino, Richard Amore, as well as some of the paving people. So there's interest at the state level to kind of get their arms around all of this and wrap it all up together as well. So there's support.
Also, in the last years, we're talking about possibly studying whether or not, I can't remember the name of the road behind City Hall, is that North?
North Street.
Making that a one-way possibly and dealing with the lack of... Making that a one-way possibly and dealing with the lack of sidewalks. Can we wrap that study somehow into any of this?
I don't think so, but we should be. I'd kind of forgotten about that, but I don't know whether it's too late for us to ask for assistance from the Regional Planning Commission on that. Because you really, in order to do something like that, you have to have a traffic study. And that's done by a professional who would have to be hired. And the only source of money I can think of is that if we, the planning grants have already passed, haven't they?
Yeah, both municipal planning grants and the TAC grants have gone by for this cycle, but we could next time. But this can't really be wrapped into the paving project.
I just, I know it was kind of out there and we sort of lost sight of that one.
Yeah, yeah. And I think we should look at that.
So maybe get on a calendar, so next time through, we do make sure it gets onto the potential.
Absolutely. I imagine it wouldn't hurt to contact the Regional Planning Commission to see whether there's any possibility for them to do something relative to the study that has to be done.
Wednesday night, I can talk to Adam about it.
Oh, okay. I mean, it doesn't have to be an extensive study, given the size of the street and that sort of thing, but a fair number of people need to be talked to because of, you know, the businesses that are at one end. Well, at both ends, actually, and the effect that it may have on them. Okay, so, that's it for my report. So I guess we're at the point of...
I officially refuse myself from this executive session and decision.
I'd like just to make a comment before we go into executive session. As everybody is, everybody's on lots of committees and lots of boards and whatever. And my feeling is personally, is that I don't think the council can make a decision, even a recommendation, not knowing that what the board needs for a person representing the community. For instance, you know, somebody on one board might be looking for somebody who has a financial background, or somebody might be looking for somebody that has a commuter, computer background. I'm not sure that we know what the Bixby Library trustees are looking for. So, we can go through the process of saying, well, we've listened to two of them and we know there's three of them. But are we the ones that are the best judgment of who that trustee should be? I doubt it. So I would like to make the recommendation, and, you know, you can go into executive session if you want, but I'd like to make the recommendation that we turn this over to the trustees to interview the three people directly and make their own decision.
Well, how you can accomplish that, at least by the way the deed is written, is that if we do nothing, they're free to do the appointment. And it doesn't involve us at all. It's totally theirs. So...
But then do we lose someone who is a representative of the city council on...
No, no, it's still the representative of the city council. But if we, I guess they put it in there because they figured, well, sometimes city council isn't going to do anything. And so if we do nothing, then it's totally theirs to make that decision. And actually, it's, well, I guess it's not really their decision. If we designate someone, they really have to appoint that. Because just the way that it's written in there, our designee, they appoint, they're the appointing authority, but they really have to do it. And, but we can just sit back and do nothing.
That's what I'd like to see us do. I would like the board, the Bixby trustees, make the decision. So if we need to...
If you make that a motion, I'll second it.
Do we need to table this or say we just, we make no decision?
Well, I don't think you even have to have a motion.
I think that's something you could go into executive and figure this out and come back.
Well, the only thing that we can do in an executive session, I guess, is discuss the candidates. And we're not really supposed to be discussing anything else. So if we're going to change the process, basically, then we can change the process in public forum and just say, we can, I'm not sure it needs a motion. If we do nothing and there's a consensus that we do nothing and leave it up to the trustees, there's the trustees right there, so they'll know that's what we're doing. That is possible.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What, can you tell us what you are looking for?
Well, a couple of things. I would really think that the board at this time would benefit from someone who has some public library background, who could come in and help us in the process that we're trying to transform the library right now to become more relevant to people and to attract more people to the library. We're trying to find people outside of the age range of the board right now. We feel like there's a group of people who have moved to Virgin's that are not using the library necessarily. They are people in their late twenties and early thirties. So we are looking for that representation from the board. We, I appreciate what Lynn said about the expertise of, you know, computers or whatever. But the main thing that we are looking for is someone who can understand what we're trying to do, you know, like right away, on the ground, running with us. And so it's the enthusiasm, it's the experience and the background in libraries that I was particularly looking for at this time.
So, if there's a motion to go into executive session because basically you want to continue with the process of selection, then that'll tell us that's what we want to do. If there is no motion, then we will have no decision and it will be up to the trustees to do it. Okay, we didn't have a second, so it dies anyhow.
I kind of disagree with, I mean, since we're going higher, I can come back into this, that we would be giving up the authority that the deed is specifically giving us. I know that that says if we don't do nothing, but I would read that as if, for some reason, we don't get around to it or we, but to just say, you know what? We want to keep our hands clean and we don't want to really decide who it is that represents us. And not just for the library, but for anything. And I think that's just a bad precedent to set where we're saying, you know, we don't really care who it is that's going to represent. We're going to let somebody else make that decision for the council, rather than the council actually saying, this is it. If we need more information, we want to have more interviews, that's one thing. But stepping back and having another entity choose for us doesn't seem like we're doing our job.
Well, I don't think it's us washing our hands. I think Lynn put it very well, you know, the library vetted these candidates. And I think that it's the board's responsibility to present us with those options.
The library talked to one candidate.
That's all they received at that point. So that candidate was vetted. And I'm not opposed to opening that up. I'm glad that we did that and we had more responses. But I really do believe it's the board's vision that needs to be fulfilled. And none of us are really well-equipped to know what that vision is. And quite frankly, I'm grateful that someone's willing to do that sort of work for us. You know, they spent several hours interviewing one candidate. Now there are three. So I don't know that we're best equipped to make that decision, other than a recommendation.
When you look at, when you look at the process, I mean, it's, and it's speculative based on what whoever developed that had in mind. But I suspect that it might have had something to do with protecting the city's interests in the event that the interests of the board, and I'm not saying this is the case, but in the interests, in the situation where the interests of the board and the interests of the city became divergent. I think that that, I could be wrong, but that may have been where that came from. And I agree with Lynn. I mean, we're not necessarily where we sit at this point, particularly well-equipped to make the decision. But I also agree with Mark. I think that when we abdicate our responsibility, I'm not sure that that's in our best interests either. And so it's a, it's kind of a catch-22. And it's not necessarily, or it shouldn't be a situation where there's, and this situation doesn't exist, but where, you know, there's the board wanting one thing and the city wanting the other. I mean, that's not where we're at. It's not where we want to be. So I'm not really sure where we go with it.
I'll just add this. I think that we met, or we've seen two excellent candidates. And we have a letter from a third candidate who's excellent, too. If there were, if there was a lot of controversy about these three people or there was a question of someone's integrity, then that's where I think we would have stepped in. That's not the case here. We have three really good candidates. I think that we've allowed the candidates to come forward. We've seen them. We've interviewed them. We've given the opportunity for other people to come in. And now we say, we present you three candidates. You choose. I don't think that there's anything wrong with that as long as we have participated in the process, which we have. We've advertised it. We've interviewed them. And we're saying, we agree, all three candidates are excellent. You choose who you need right now. I don't think we've, I don't think we've put our job aside.
Let me ask one more question of you, because I'm trying to wrap my head around the whole thing. So, who, it sounds like the board has a fairly well-developed vision of where you'd like to take the library. Is that correct?
It is, yes.
Are you looking specifically for someone that supports that vision?
It's a good question. I would say we're looking for someone who understands what we're trying to accomplish in the strategic plan. Certainly, to have other opinions is welcome at the table. You don't want everything rubber-stamped. So having different opinions is a good thing, in my opinion.
Okay. Does that, I'm still not clear. I mean, does that, what does that mean?
Well, you're saying, are you looking for someone who supports the vision? We are looking for someone who understands what we are trying to accomplish, yes.
And again, I mean, that puts us in the situation of where, I don't, I mean, me personally, I don't really know what that vision is. So, and we haven't heard from the candidates, what their vision. So I'm, you know, we're kind of in the dark here. I mean, where I'm sitting, I don't know what we do with it.
Well, I could, could I make just an observation or a recommendation? With other boards, for example, the Planning Commission or the Development Review Board, we go through and we interview, we vet that, those candidates. And then we make a recommendation to the city council, who then appoints that person. I understand that the board appoints for the library, but you're designating them. Perhaps the library board could make a recommendation to the city council, which could then designate that person. Thus, you're accomplishing both things. You're not abdicating your responsibility. You're designating that person, but you're following the recommendation of the board.
We are still bound, we are bound by the deed.
Right, right. But that doesn't preclude them from making a recommendation to us for the designee. We still...
I don't think it reads that way.
This is an annual appointment, yes?
Yeah.
Right.
I think, well, I think in reviewing as to what a designee would be, I think that anybody making a recommendation to us is acceptable. Could be the library trustees, could be the Planning Commission. It could be anybody could make a recommendation to us. And then we look at that recommendation and decide which one is going to be the designee. I mean, it's still our decision to make. We're just getting more information in a different manner. And then they make the appointment. So it kind of accomplishes both. But as it stands for tonight, if there is no motion to go into executive session, then the issue at least dies for this meeting. And the trustees between this meeting and the next meeting could make their own appointment if they want to. Or we can find some other way to deal with it.
I think that, I mean, the last thing I would say is, I mean, we're fortunate in this situation here is there doesn't appear to be any strife or discord or any other sort of immediate chaos that needs to be dealt with relative to the board. I'm assuming that's correct. Things are running smooth. Good. So we're fortunate here. I mean, going forward, that might not always be the case. So...
I also want this hanging out. It's longer, and especially Martha's now, almost two months since we first asked. And she's kind of hanging out there. We have two other people. We told them there would be a decision and now we're going to punt again. Seems like we're not being very fair to any of these three candidates about how this processes. We keep kind of changing the rules at the end of each meeting. It's like, oh, well, why don't you go do this? And then, oh, we need a letter here. You need to talk to these people here. We'll make a decision, but we're not going to make a decision. And we're going to let these people come and tell us something that we might agree with or not later on. So by March, we might have a decision. Something's got to happen and a decision has to be made. And you guys need a person.
Well, would the city council consider appointing one of the Virgin's trustees who is already serving on the board as the designated city council representative? As a way to kind of cut through this?
I don't even know who's on the board.
We have two Virgin's residents, Peter Welsh and Nial Relle, who has just joined our board.
Well, of course I've...
And his last name is R-E-L-E.
Okay. I don't know that person. I've known Peter for eons. And he's been on the library board for eons. I'm not so sure we're in a better position with that. I, if I were to lean a particular way, I think I would lean towards, sorry Lynn, but, you know, going into executive session, discussing it and see if we can come up with a decision. And if we can't, then we can come out and say, we didn't come up with a decision. And then it's up to the library trustees to go forward. But I'm only the chair. I can't make the motion. So if you don't want, if you don't do that, as I said, it's open and the library trustees can go ahead and appoint someone. Or they could leave it open for a while until we go back at it again. I'm not sure what will happen, but nothing will happen tonight, that's for sure.
This is where I have to refuse myself.
So, I'm going to give it about 30 seconds. If I don't get a motion, we're going to be adjourning.
I'll make a motion and we go into executive session and go through the process.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Four out of six. Okay. Okay. So, thank you, folks. All right. So, I guess I have to kind of formulate this. So in executive session, we did not come up with a decision. And we feel that, well, actually, you could say it better. You said it exactly the way, and I didn't write down the words.
As a board, we feel that there are three excellent candidates that would be, we'd be very proud to have on the Bixby Library Board. And we would leave it, our confidence, to the trustees of the Bixby Library to make their decision based on those three people with our blessing.
Sounds good to me. Doesn't need a motion. We have said our piece.
That being said, I'd make the motion to adjourn.
That being said, I'd make the motion to adjourn.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.